Representatives from the Navy here with us. We welcome Captain Lou Shager, Captain Frank Hugle, and retired Admiral, Rear Admiral Craig Quigley, and also Paula Moran from the Wounded Warrior Program. We're going to start off with Captain Lou Shager giving us a little presentation here. Thank you. Welcome, Captain.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Council, thanks so much for having me, Captain Quigley, and Frank, and the rest of the guests. Anytime they get out of the office, it's great. So I greatly appreciate this. If you could ask me more often, I'd come more often, for sure. Please stop me at any time if you have any questions about anything as I go through this. It'll be fairly brief. A quick overview, we have the benefit, and I have the benefit of inheriting a wonderful relationship from my predecessors. It's fortunate that Captain Geis is still local. He's working at the region. And of course, Captain Kit Cho, who's looking for work. He asked me to bring his resume. I told him that wouldn't be appropriate. But I will take your cards if you want to offer it up. Next slide, please. Again, 2014, another wonderful year. The first bullet there, we were runner-up for the Navy Installation Excellence Award, worldwide for large installations. Essentially, here in the Mid-Atlantic region, installations from Maine to Chicago to essentially with Oceana. Admiral Smith and Admiral Williamson selected Oceana as their nomination, which we were greatly honored. But I will note that when you put in your application, or you set up this nomination and you send it forward, it is clear that it's not just inside of our fence line. Most of our engagement, our collaboration with the city of Virginia Beach clearly put us over the top and set us apart from most other installations. And for that, this is truly an award that's shared with the city of Virginia Beach and Oceana. I want to thank you all for that. The next, for those that were able to hit the airshow last year, 314,000 people, a record crowd, attended with our theme of Navy Wounded Warrior and Safe Harbor honoring that program. We were recognized with the Dick Schram Memorial Community Service Award. And what that is, is essentially the top military airshow in the country. And again, it certainly just wasn't Oceana alone. It was actually a regional effort, and with the help of the city of Virginia Beach certainly put us over the top. And again, we're grateful for that. And lastly, the Secretary of the Navy's Energy Award for Large Shore Installations. We have continued to remain at the forefront for looking for opportunities with energy awareness, water conservation, both on our installation, and we're being recognized for that. But I think as a way ahead, we're continuing to look for opportunities. We're working closely with the Navy's Renewable Energy Program Office, and we expect to see over the next couple of years, some initiatives come to fruition, one of them including utilizing full-to-vodaic rays on our installation and generating some solar power to be used both off of our installation grid and onto it. We're very excited about that. In March, this ACU's document right here, it is an all-encompassing document, kind of collects the gazillions of pieces of paper and documents that, when you talk about ACU's, you want to get the DOD version, the Navy version, the Air Force version, the community version, the state version, the Commonwealth version. This is an all-encompassing document, one of a kind, and it's essentially the model, I'm confidently saying, throughout the country on how to work ACU's. And it started here in Virginia Beach. It started probably with a lot of bright minds here at this table coming up with a way to try to work that collaborative effort to ensure that the Navy and Oceana remains viable. And so we're very proud of this document. But this would not have been possible without the very, very hard work of staffers here at the city. And so again, we're very grateful for that. Continuing our close collaboration, we have created, or the artist, as I like to say, formerly known as an MOU, now the Joint Review Process Agreement in dealing with how we manage the encroachment and purchasing properties in and around Oceana. That process, the only real change, the only real tangible difference between this MOU and the Joint Review Process Agreement is just the name. It certainly isn't broke. It certainly has been very effective. Some small minor tweaks have occurred with collaborative efforts between our staff, the region staff, and the city. But we're confident that, again, this document is going to continue to provide, this agreement will continue to provide great leeway in the way ahead for how we handle encroachment around Oceana. The partnering in the inter-traffic facility area and the rural ACU's area continues to far exceed our expectations. We just had an OLUC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and again, it just proves that the willing sellers are starting to dry up, as you all know. And I don't think necessarily that's a bad thing. I think that's just a testament to the effort that's been made. And again, we're very grateful for that. We have continued to conduct numerous, very large-scale joint exercises with the city of Virginia Beach, the Virginia Beach Police, the Fire EMS. And we did a first. We worked with Camp Pendleton, Lieutenant Colonel Scarborough and Brigadier General Williams, the Agent-in-General here at the Army National Guard. We wanted to come up with an opportunity to work with the Commonwealth on their property, leveraging a lot of the training that Oceana has grown accustomed to leverage. With the airshow, we usually have large-scale exercises for that. We do some at Dam Neck and Frontiers. But this one at Camp Pendleton was the first of its kind. And I know that Commonwealth got a lot out of it, the Air National Guard, Brigadier General Williams was extremely pleased, as was Lieutenant Colonel Scarborough. Of course, we got a lot out of it, too. And we're going to look forward to continue to try those large-scale combined emergency management exercises, not only for the effectiveness of our response, but also, of course, to continue to build those relationships that we enjoy. The next two slides are just going to talk briefly about some of the projects in facility infrastructure investment we have at Oceana and Dam Neck Annex. As you can see up there, we've got about $27 million for barracks at Dam Neck Annex. Our main gate for those that have driven through there, hopefully that's coming to the conclusion of that build. We hope by October it'll be complete. It'll be a nice roundabout, and I expect the traffic to be less than certainly that we're seeing now. Next com, our Navy Exchange Command Headquarters is actually off of Virginia Beach Boulevard. And Oceana NAFAC Public Works essentially owns that. And so we have some projects that are going on right off the Boulevard there. An aerial target facility, that's essentially drones that get launched for air-to-air training as well as surface-to-air training. We're upgrading that at Dam Neck Annex. Maritime Surveillance Facility, I have to admit, for the last, since 1993, I didn't know a whole lot about Dam Neck Annex and what they do there until the last 20 months. I've certainly learned a lot. And the underwater surveillance and submariner opportunities and strategic importance that they have there at Dam Neck is significant. And so we're investing in the infrastructure for good reason there at Dam Neck on the North End. And the Marines, of course, are playing a part at Dam Neck, and so we see them investing as well. Next. The beach replenishment at Dam Neck Annex is just completed. The next slide, I'll show you a depiction of that. We're proud to shore up that shoreline, literally and figuratively, to protect us from those possible hurricanes, and also protecting that vast investment, as you see the money that we're pouring in here. Another barracks renovation at Oceana, the runway, one of the runways will be repaired, and a $70 million airfield lighting modernization that should be initiated this year. 70 million, that's a lot. And I can tell you that these lights, I think some of them are from literally 1943 when they first made that airfield. I mean, they're old, and they're in great need of repair. And so we're happy to see that investment made into the airfield. You know, we just did the, three of the four runways, just resurfaced those. And so that fourth runway will be resurfaced, or redo the lighting, and truly bring it up to specs as a modern airfield facility should be. And then some hangar repairs. And if you're counting up, and maybe Frank was, the total sum of all this money, $253.1 million, almost a quarter of, over a quarter of a billion dollars of investment here at Oceana and Dam Neck Annex. And that's quite a sum, and that's all going to be occurring over the next three or four years. And of course, that's just not benefiting, of course, the Navy and Oceana and Dam Neck. But I know a lot of those folks that are working on these contracts are coming right from here in the city of Virginia Beach, and we're proud of that, too. Next. Here's a picture of the beach line. Up here, you can see the beginning of it. And then down near there is the completed product. 630,000 cubic yards and 9,300 feet of beachfront have been replenished. And that was actually a year delayed. We're very happy that that's there. You know, when we found out it was delayed last year, both Kit and I were like, oh, man, now it's going to be a bad storm, we're going to get crushed. So we're very fortunate that this is in place. Next. I want to touch on this, our partnership in force protection with the city of Virginia Beach. About two months ago, there was a hit list, for lack of a better word, from ISIS. They came out and identified about 100 military servicemen and women to be targeted. About 30 or so were here in the Hampton Roads, and some of them were my close friends working right at Oceana. And so when that first came out, a couple of months ago, there was, of course, great consternation and concern. Literally had their picture on their website with asking folks to go take care of them, right? Some lone wolves. And so some families were very nervous, and rightfully so. But I have to admit and tell you that, within minutes of this list going out, our FBI was working closely with our NCIS, which is working closely with my security team and Frank's as well, but more to the point with the city of Virginia Beach's police department. And I can't tell you how comforting it is to know that Chief Servaree and his team led from the front, from the beginning, to the point where they came in and we provide mutual briefs, and something to the effect, to give an example, if there's a 911 call, for example, at one of these houses, one of these homes have been identified, the dispatchers know that. They're sending that information to the Virginia Beach City Cops that know that, accuse them. This is a little bit more significant than we've heard before. And I can't tell you how comforting that is for me as the CEO of Oceana, but for our Oceana family and those military service members that have been targeted. But I bring this up just because, as of late, we've increased our force protection condition in general, writ large, throughout all of the installations, to what we call force protection condition, bravel with some measures. And again, the collaborative efforts with the city has been fantastic, and I'm confident that we have maintained a safe posture within our fence line. And I know with the efforts outside of our fence line, that's going to continue. So I can't thank you enough. Next. Looking ahead, like I talked about, that main gate construction, boy, I can't wait till that's done. The replacement of our aging F-18 Charlie, the older model Hornets, that's going to continue. There's six squadrons still at Oceana. One is currently being transitioned to an F-18E Super Hornet Squadron, which leaves five left. And that process will continue. Last update that Kit provided, we talked about two squadrons moving from Oceana to Lemoore. Currently, these two squadrons, VFA 136 and VFA 11, they're currently deployed on the Theodore Roosevelt. When they return, when VFA 136 returns next spring or summer, they will move to Lemoore. So that is currently still going to occur, as it stands today. VFA 11, the other squadron that's been identified, we're not too sure of the timing of when that would occur. We still believe it will occur, probably within the next two or three years. But again, just based on some permeations of logistics that may be delayed. That includes about 10 aircraft. A squadron makes up about 230 personnel, and their associated families will move west. Probably won't have a significant impact on the way we do business at Oceana, or I quite frankly, I don't think on any significant impact on the economy or anything within this region. Next, the earliest planned study of the F-35 Joint Strike Fighter is 2018. And I underline "study" because it is really just the beginning, the first step of figuring out, should we pursue an environmental impact study? We know those take time, at least probably four to five years. And until that point, until that study is complete, that's when they'll make the decision. So we're still far, far out from deciding if F-35 will be coming to Oceana. I will tell you that because of the well-known slide of that program, we have purchased more Super Hornets, and I do expect the Super Hornet to remain in service at Oceana for quite some time to bridge that gap. And then lastly, we're going to continue with that integrated municipal Commonwealth large-scale training that we enjoy to continue to prepare us for the worst, as well as continue to build those relationships. Next. I'll finish with the Oceana airshow. As you saw in earlier slide, we had a wildly successful airshow, and that was even a year removed because we didn't have one the previous year, 2013. So we're very, very fortunate that our team figured it out, honed all their skills, and got it back up and running. And I'm very proud to say that this year, we're going to honor our Vietnam veterans. It'll be 50 years since the inception, 1965, of large-scale combat actions there in Vietnam. And I think the time is right, and I think it's appropriate, and I'm very excited for some of the opportunities that we're going to have reaching out to our local, all of the veterans, of course, but in particular the Vietnam veteran community, which I think they are so richly deserving of some recognition and a deep debt of gratitude from this community and from the Navy, quite frankly. So I'm very excited for that. And as usual, if any of you have any thoughts or ideas, or any Vietnam veterans that you'd like to send my way to communicate and talk about some initiatives, I am all ears because we want to make this the most inclusive, most wildly successful airshow ever. So please, I think you know how to reach and find me. Next. That's it.
Any questions for Captain Shager?
Yes, there's a question. There's a squadron that's about to return from deployments sometime soon. Could we come to the, I guess?
The fly-in?
The fly-in?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful.
VF-81, currently deployed on the USS Vinson. They're returning after their nine, nine-and-a-half month deployment.
Okay.
And the exact fly-in date, it'll be early June. I don't know the exact date, but I'll get back to you right away.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
And that would be wonderful to welcome them in. They're a unique squadron, like the squadron I commanded, because they are a squadron that's based out of Virginia Beach, but they're attached to a West Coast aircraft carrier. So probably some of you have been not aware that we have a squadron returning from deployment because generally they come home with the carrier, and there's usually the dual fly-in, and then the carrier pulls in. So they will be landing in San Diego, flying off, and then taking their 10 aircraft or 12 aircraft to Virginia Beach at Oceana. And then the remaining 230 personnel will fly, you know, our 737, our Sea 40 Navy aircraft over as their homecoming flight. And I know they're very excited to come home. So thank you for asking.
I hear you.
First, thank you for the excellent presentation.
Sure.
Congratulations on both awards.
Thank you.
And also, a lot of the Vietnam veterans are excited about this.
Thank you.
So thank you for having the fly-in over there.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Yes, Bob?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Senator.
On your beach replenishment at Dam Neck Annex?
Yes.
Very glad to have that done. Is this, do you have any thought, or is it at all programmed, that this is a recurring thing, or you all just do it as you feel like you have to?
No, I believe it was last done seven years ago. It was supposed to be done last year, so about a five to six-year plan. And I think we recognize the importance of that, and we also see on each of our side, we simply were, we were an enclave between an enclave, as we saw what was happening with Sandbridge bringing replenished and then the oceanfront. So it was certainly long overdue, but we do see it programmed for future replenishments as well.
Well, good. Maybe at some point, we can coordinate all of these at the same time and get better visits and that kind of thing. Just want to say thank you so much for, I know every now and then we have to disturb Dam Neck with allowing Sandbridge traffic to go through because Sandbridge Road gets blocked.
Right.
I can't just imagine why one road gets blocked so many times, but the people at Sandbridge really appreciate, and I know that's quite an effort to pull that together to let them be able to go through if an emergency occurs, but thank you.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. You know, I think it's a product of the wonderful relationships we have with the first precinct and Captain Swires, Dave Swires, who I spoke to two days ago about a couple of things. You know, it is, again, I'm inheriting relationships. For those that were at the Change of Command speech, my job is to maintain those and take them to another level, like Kit did. And I think it makes it easy when I can call up Dave and say, why do you need it? And he will never call unless they truly need it, and it's a no-brainer, and our team is ready to respond. And it's very easy to do for the right reasons, and it's always been for the right reasons.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, sir, I think I speak for many people at this table and in, you know, the community, how much we value the Navy being here, you know, Oceana, and especially the bridges and relationships we have built over the last decade plus. You know, just the succession of excellent CEOs that, you know, just like we were melding and, you know, the efforts of our staff. And, you know, I think we've really, you know, really took giant steps forward. And I tell you, the way that you open up the base for the airshow, and, you know, I'm sure it's got to be some security concerns and everything, but the way you just make everybody feel welcome and you accommodate so many people, and, you know, it's just a tremendous undertaking that you do to outreach to the public, and I think it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that.
Anybody else? Captain, I just want to say how much we appreciate your attendance at the OLUC meetings and the participation that you give us there. It's great to have you there, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much for your attention. It's great to be here, truly. Invite me back, and I'll come right away. Get out of the office. Thank you.
I see you every Tuesday. Hang on.
All right. Our next speaker is Captain Frank Hewlett, who is the commanding officer of the Joint JEB Little Creek Fort Story Base. Captain, welcome.
Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, it's my pleasure to be here. I want to thank you for inviting me. It's the first time I've been here. Been in command 27, 28 months now. Obviously, I'm just kidding, but I have. But it's hard to follow Blue. You know, Blue's a class act, and I think, and I look at Bob Geis, and I look at Gator Choak, and I look at Blue Shager, they've got the right guys in there every time. I got in by accident, so I'm not sure what happened. Somebody wasn't paying attention when I got selected. Since this is my first time, I want to baseline a lot of myth, misunderstanding, because this thing is a weird duck, okay? The JEB. I get questions all the time. What does that mean? What is it? What happened? And I want to kind of level the playing field and set the baseline here. So as I go through a lot of it, you're going to be, it's a lot of background. To an expeditionary base, one day you're driving down North Hampton, it says NAB Little Creek this way, the next day it says JEB Little Creek this way. What happened was through the BRAC process, the Brace Realignment Enclosure process, we were jointed with Fort Story in an effort to garner efficiencies. Doesn't make a lot of sense to have two bases seven miles apart to run independent police forces, independent fire departments. Doesn't make any sense. So we blended the two together, placed it under a Navy commanding officer, that'll always be a Navy guy, with the Army deputy. I have an Army Lieutenant Colonel deputy who kind of keeps an eye on Fort Story for me. I live in the Big Brick House on Fort Story, so I can kind of keep an eye on it, too. But that's the whole joint base. To garner efficiencies where it makes sense in a DOD, I report to Navy Region Mid-Atlantic like Blue does, but I also report to the Officer Secretary of Defense in the Joint Basing Office. So I have two bosses in reality. Next slide, Scott, please. Quick overview, we have 130 different commands. Admiral Harvey, when he was Fleet Forces Commander, described us as a bunch of Gucci capabilities over there. Because we do. We have very unique capabilities resident in those 130 commands. I have the one and only underwater construction team on the East Coast. If we have a hurricane Sandy, have to go open a port. These Seabees, underwater welders, divers, can open port infrastructure. So there's a lot of unique capability. That's on the unique side. The other side is the high-demand, low-density capabilities of the EOD, Explosive Ordnance Disposal folks, as well as the Navy East Coast SEALs. I have the majority of the East Coast SEALs with me, and there's a certain element in Lou's neighborhood, but I've got the lion's share of them with me. Both bases, 7.6 miles beachfront is what I cover between Fort Story and what I have at Little Creek, so it's quite a bit of that oceanfront. Lot of different ships. I've got MSC ships, Military Seal of Command ships, I've got Navy grayhalls, as well as the Coast Guard now. And we'll talk about that here in a little bit. So not only do I have Navy, but I have Coast Guard home ported at Little Creek as well. Lot of small craft, a lot of the small craft, the hovercraft, the LCACs are there, the conventional landing craft, all there, as well as some of the more sexy patrol boats that the special boat units have over there, that you see zorging by at 50 knots if you're out on the waterfront any given night. Last night was a good example of Cape Henry, quite a bit of activity. As well as, I have on-base and off-base housing. Much like Lou and all the other housing, it's all gone privatized, yet I still have privatized housing, which we gave to property managers, Lincoln Military Housing being the one at Little Creek, Valverde being the one at Fort Story, 50-year leases to the homes. So if you come down Shore Drive and all that Navy housing you see, that's Virginia Beach jurisdiction. I no longer have, go in there. Chief Servaree and his folks and the Fired folks are working that very closely with our folks in light of the current situation that Blue alluded to with the increased threat. But the housing is no longer mine. It is now privatized and part of the community. Next slide. This is probably the most important slide I'm going to show you today. Prior to 9/11, the base population at Little Creek was less than 9,000. Fifteen, almost 14 years of war, we've over-doubled the population in Little Creek in that short period. Now, Little Creek itself is at 18,400. Total base population between the two bases is over 21,000. Much like any city that explodes in a population, the infrastructure lags. So as we've gone through a great deal of population explosion, the infrastructure's now catching up. And I'll show you some of the projects that we're doing right now in a little bit here, just kind of give you an idea how we're upgrading infrastructure. We had a major milestone achieved about three weeks ago, and I'll mention that as well. Bottom line, though, we are larger in population, the largest government player in the city of Virginia Beach, $1.3 billion in payroll. That includes everybody from me on down to the minimum wage McDonald's worker on base. But that's pretty much what happened. This dip right here is the cyber forces going out to Suffolk. I've got people backfilling into there once we renovate their spaces, so that'll go back up to over 22,000 here by the end of the year. Next slide. Kill Scott. No animation, Scott. Okay. Back up one. Quick overview of the base layout and how it's laid out. A couple of years back, matter of fact, probably five years ago, half of Little Creek was in Norfolk. My office, for example, had a Norfolk mailing address, the other half of the base had a Virginia Beach mailing address. Bill Crowe, I don't know if you're all familiar with Bill Crowe, very visionary. One of the greatest things he did was put the entire base into Virginia Beach. So now our post office, we have one post office, there's two. The red area here is where all the work gets done, where our piers are. We've got over 60 piers. The big piers are right in here where the large grayhalls operate from. This area right here is private property. This is, if you're not familiar with it, you do have a deepwater port in the city of Virginia Beach, a deepwater berth in the city of Virginia Beach, and it's right here, right in the middle of my base. So you have a commercial port, about, I say deepwater, it's 24 feet here alongside the piers. Relatively deep. But once again, the red is where all the action takes place. Yellow is the housing area, the commissary, the support infrastructure. Green is wetlands, if you're not familiar with Little Creek. Little Creek was purchased in July of 1942, about the same time Oceana was being built. And it was from the Whitehurst Farm. The Whitehurst Farm was a bean farmer, and a lot of his property was beans and swamp. Swamp's still there. Every time it rains, we flood. It's a wonderful place to be if you haven't been there in a rainstorm. So there's no sea level rise problems at Little Creek. It's just rainwater that we have a problem with. The blue is training areas. If you look, I've got a little bit of training area at Little Creek, and it's coming off the Chesapeake Bay there, right adjacent to Chick's Beach, the western side of Chick's Beach. So you see a lot of activity coming in and out. This is Shore Drive for the people that are trying to orientate what we're looking at right here. And this obviously is the end of the runway, Norfolk International. Next slide. Okay. Now, in the inverse, you saw the little bit of blue we had at Little Creek, lot of blue at Fort Story. Fort Story's a training base. Not a lot happens there. About 5:00 every night, they roll up the sidewalks, and it becomes very quiet, or it becomes very noisy depending on the training schedule that day. A lot of strange helicopters flying over my house all night long. But this is the admin spaces where the work is done, housing, but a lot of training is happening here. And I'm going to show you some of the training numbers to show you a phenomenon that's happened over the last couple of years. And oh, by the way, Blue moved 600,000 square or cubic yards of sand. I moved, beach replenishment just finished, the same people worked mine went to his when they were done. We moved 900,000 cubic yards before they went to Blue's beaches. So back to your point about synchronizing this, it's a great idea because same guys, so it would have been very easy to, you know, fill in the gap between Dam Neck and Fort and Fort Story, maybe. So that's a good point. Next slide, please. I talked about training. The Navy took a shift in philosophy of training. Those Explosive Ordnance Disposal people, those Navy SEALs are deployed quite a bit the last 14 years. The overseas contingency operations, the war on terror, whatever you want to call it, is heavily into the special warfare operators lurking, you know, fighting in the shadows. And those guys are family men, just like the rest of us, with families at home, and they don't want to spend time away from home. So Fort Story became a critical node in their training because it provides an irreplacable, I can't even say that word, you can't replicate it anywhere else. Because you've got literal approaches coming off the water, hitting targets ashore training, coming off the Atlantic Ocean. So you've got training areas that are invaluable, not present anywhere in the United States today. And that's what makes it so valuable. And in an effort to keep the SEALs at home, they've increased their training quite a bit because they're deployed so much. So they're able to enjoy a quality of life, and this is a huge shift in what we've done over the last couple of years, as you can see. Upwards of over 10,000 training events, those are training man days a year, so that's considerable. Next slide, please. This is what I think about every day when I get up. My area of interest is more, because I've got two bases and I've got to connect the two. So what do I care about? Well, I care about Lusen Bridge, obviously, something I worry about every day as I'm sitting in traffic, because Bob swore it wouldn't ever close down, and of course, I'm sitting in traffic because it was closed one day. Goodness, Mayor was in the same traffic jam I was in that day, as I'm going back and forth. But from Little Creek, you know, we are consumed by a lot of different things. The airport being a big one. The green box here is the approaches into Norfolk International. So we have the airplanes, you can reach out my ops tower and shake the hands of the pilots as they fly over the base, it's that low. So we work very closely with the FAA, as well as the airport, on how we respond in case of an emergency. And that was kind of, those things that happen. Also, when I move ships around, I have to be very careful of how the larger Navy ships, because of the height of those masses of those ships, I have to have five days' notification, for example, of the FAA before I move a ship. So I work very, very closely with the FAA on a daily basis. We're in constant communications as we move the ships around. East Beach is another one of our Norfolk neighbors to the west there. As my, as their property values go up, the amount of noise the base makes also goes up. The fact that there's airplanes landing here is irrelevant, because I get phone calls all the time to the city of Norfolk about the base making noise. We're working to be good neighbors with everybody, obviously, and I, you know, like I said, my area of, what I'm interested in is everything out in this way. Everything out here, good neighbors, the whole backside over there, Lake Bradford and all back in there, don't have any issues. And we try to keep it that way. We go quiet every night, 2200. Understand, everybody goes to bed 2200, and we don't really try to spin up until about 7:00 in the morning. Okadoke, unless, of course, there's something really strange going on. But I look at the water around the areas, too. Fort Story, obviously, we're surrounded by First Landing State Park, which is a really good neighborhood to be surrounded by. They don't really care about the noise too terribly much. But we're also looking into the waterborne approaches to the training areas I'm talking about. Cape Henry, there's some unique challenges currently ongoing, but I've seen the article in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago with the deepwater anchorages off Cape Henry. Those are military training anchorages, or military anchorages, but with the new Panamax modifications going on in the Panama Canal, the deeper draft vessels are coming into Norfolk, and really, there's only a couple of places where you've got 55 feet-deep or greater anchorages as the approaches into Norfolk. So the Navy, me, I'm bumping up with the $163 million day industry called maritime industry, and we're working very hard to make everybody wins. Because those SEALs I was talking about need a place to train, so they go sleep at night, but we're talking $163 million industry, there's got to be some give and take. So we've been working very closely with the Coast Guard, Port Captain, and the Virginia maritime industry to make this all work out. So I'm very concerned about the waters out here. Another little outlier for those people who've been paying attention for the last seven years is the 67th Street Project. We had numerous false starts over how many years, I don't know, but we have finally opened that this winter. 20 condos, two-bedroom, three-bedroom at the old Beach Club location right there on northern end of Virginia Beach, the north end side there. Good stuff. It's a hugely popular place, and we work closely with the city when we put that in place to make sure it conforms to the local architectures, that we don't have anything that's stuck out like a sore thumb, as well as keeping the rents comparable, just a little bit less than the neighborhood, but not much, for a benefit for the Navy folks that are able to rent those facilities. So that's my area of interest as I look at the map every day as I come to and from where. Next slide. Lou hit on it. We've got a great relationship with the city, and this is just some of the stuff where we're working hand-in-hand with the city. And I'll tell you something else. Lou and I, when we work with the city, typically will call each other, because it's no fair for us to double-tap people here from me than here from Lou 10 minutes later. So we will typically call each other beforehand, and I don't care about ACUs, by the way. But everything else, I care about. But when we do engage on education, whether we do engage on any of these aspects, we do coordinate, so we're getting the same answer from both of us, and we're only telling you guys one time. So there is some coordination. Mutual aid, I'll throw mutual aid out there. Our fire department, I have three companies, two at Little Creek, one at Fort Story, and we work very, very well with the City of Virginia Beach through the effect of 251 calls outside the fence line to support the City of Virginia Beach, and it reciprocates. When the two SEALs drowned in the pool a couple of weeks ago, we had beach fire and beach EMS on scene. As a matter of fact, there were beach EMS operators in the ambulances with those two SEALs that were transported to the hospital. That's how close the relationship is between beach EMS, fire, and the Navy's. I know, you know, we had the Good Friday miracle, which illustrated, but there's also on a much more routine basis, not nearly as overt as what we had over here a couple of years ago. So that's still very close out there. We say very well-plugged in. We're very plugged in. Dr. Smith, or excuse me, Spence and I and Blue are very plugged in together. 60,000 school kids in the city, 20,000 are military kids. So obviously, we're very well-connected with Dr. Spence and his organization. Dr. Spence and I sit on the Governor's Council for Education and Military Children quarterly, so we're representing not just, I'm not representing just the City of Virginia Beach, I'm representing the entire military in the state of Virginia. Dr. Spence, obviously, is representing you all. But we have a great partnership, so that message carried forward is a joint message. These are all some of the other things. Take a look, if you have any questions, anything on the list, let me know. Persa is something interesting that Blue and I were working together on with the city and with the different organizations. It's sexual assault. You know, sexual assault's not just in the military, it's across society, it's a generational thing, really. And we make sure as the sailors and soldiers and Marines and Coast Guard leave our bases and enter your city, they're either not victims nor offenders. So we're working very closely with the city, with the schools, Todd Rock Community College, Wesleyan College, as well as the city folks. So that's a huge success, and it's collaboration. There's no money involved, it's just a bunch of smart people sitting around and collaborating. Huge, huge success with that one. Next slide. Cultural resources, take a look at your SEAL that you look at every day. There are two prominently displayed cultural resources on your SEAL, both of which are right in the middle of Fort Story. I can tell you, we have 50,000 visitors a year to Fort Story to look at those two things. You come on base, a lot of y'all have been on base numerous times. Average tourist from Illinois or Iowa or whatever comes in, drives up, we search their car, make sure that they're not bringing any explosives or contraband, obviously, and let them all look at it. So yeah, we're accepting some risk, but we cannot not share the cultural resources that are resident on Fort Story, and I'm committed to that, and the Navy's committed to continue to do that on a daily basis. So, you know, the old lighthouse, 1792, and the new lighthouse was 1883. Interesting, the new one. Coast Guard still operates, obviously, the new one for those folks that look out that way, the light is on a daily basis. In addition, we've got the Comptecross statue and the Battle of Bay Cakes monument, which are next across, which makes it very convenient for the tourists when they come over. Okay. Next slide. Where are we going? I talked about explosive ordinance, the E O D technicians, these are our divers that go off and defuse things. I was talking to Jim Wood, you know, prior to kicking off here, they have some really strange tasking. As we go into election year for the presidential, run-up to the presidential election, these guys are tasked by the White House to go off and do a lot of the advance work for the President and the primary candidates as they're moving into different places that are along any waterways, et cetera, even into sewers underneath buildings. These guys are clearing the way, so it's not just going over to Afghanistan and other places in the Middle East, they're doing other things as well. Pretty high op tempo for these guys. Obviously, the Navy Special Warfare, we talked about that quite a bit, they've grown since 9/11. Matter of fact, they've added two teams and an entire group, a special warfare group since 9/11 in Little Creek. Training operations, I've talked about. Got a couple of other folks that said the cyber forces left for Suffolk to the old US ACOM or US Force, what's the name of that place? Jeffcom, Joint Forces Command over in Suffolk to fill those spaces. They're backfilling and bringing in the Coastal River Marine Group Two and Coastal River Marine Squadron Two, about 1,000 people to backfill those folks that left, and they'll be rolling in at the end of the year, about December timeframe, when their building's been renovated. On top of that, we're introducing a new capability with the Mark V patrol craft, 180-foot-long patrol craft, very capable. Don't know how many we're going to get, because they're still working on how they're going to employ them. One of those con ops things, some of them going potentially down into Bahrain in the Persian Gulf area, others may go down to the Caribbean, but they'll be fielded and introduced to the fleet through Little Creek. Talk about Coast Guard, DeVigorous showed up last year, it's 210-foot Reliance Class frigate. Take a look at that. So how many peoples? That's 80 people. It's a nice big ship, 80 people in the crew, pretty small crew. And her sister ship, the Dependable, shows up at the end of May. Much like the Colts leaving Baltimore, this is kind of in the middle of the night from Cape May to come down here, so we don't tout it a lot, you won't see it in the newspaper because there's some hurt feelings up in New Jersey about them coming down here.
Who names these ships?
Well, the Coast Guard, I don't know, but there's a little lady in tennis shoes, honest to God, in the Pentagon, it's kind of responsible for putting those together.
Really?
Yeah. I've done two pre-commissioned ships, and both of which, they go through, they were a very extensive naming process, and there is a little lady in tennis shoes in the Pentagon that kind of coordinates a lot of it. Honest. A couple of weird things. I don't know if you've seen these guys, they're catamaran-looking things, big giant garden sheds, because they're not painted, aluminum, go 50 knots, joint high-speed vessels, there's three of them at Little Creek now. Got our third one just recently, the Fall River. High speed, they fly around, you look at them, you swear to goodness nobody painted them because they go so fast, and it's weight, they're aluminum hulls and they're huge, about 300 feet, and it's a pretty significant capability. So they're in and out quite a bit. LSDs, the Lightning Ship Dock, the amphibious assault ships, the big gray things, a lot of stuff in the press, right or wrong, are they coming, are they going, are they staying? They never really went anywhere, is the bottom line. There's an article, Senator Warner's office came out and announced, you know, two new assault ships. I know Adam McQuigley's back there grinning because he was up to his eyeballs in this with me. It's a lot of paperwork drill. In other words, a couple of ships went on deployment, they moved to Norfolk on paper while they were gone, then moved back to Little Creek on paper before they got back. So they never really left. So once again, there was a lot of talk in the paper and in the local, but these ships leave and never left. Only one's going to leave, and that's just because of material condition, she'll depart from Norfolk here next year. Next slide. A little bit different, Blue's cut on it. As we sit here, I'm in execution of 221 million in projects right now. We're looking, we add about 70 million a year to the projects that we've got going on. Once again, a lot of it is to modernize and update the infrastructure. We had a major, major milestone about three weeks ago when we upgraded our power grid. That was our biggest one. I know you're shaking your head. Very Congressman original, Mayor Sessoms, a lot of people were involved in getting an emergency congressional funding bill through Congress to get our power upgrade, about $30 million, 20 million inside the fence line and 10 million outside, working with Dominion Power, which basically doubled our capacity for electrical power and as well as resiliency, where I can run, I can run around problems, as opposed to every time it rained, I lose a big chunk of the base. That was one of the things that, don't quote me in this next one, but in the BRAC discussions, that was bullseying us was the fact that the power issue's on the base. Let's vulnerable, now that's fixed, the rapid increase in capabilities, the growth of the base, population, et cetera, the infrastructure, the investment, things are going well, real well. This is the kind of things we're looking at, this is the thing Blue's doing out here, the shoreline erosion, spent 19 million on the 900,000 cubic yards that we moved around. But there's other strange things happening. It's good, news is good. Okay, sequestration, that's great, but we're still operating a lot of money, which translates into jobs for the community, so we're happy to be doing that. Next slide. Okay, takeaway is where we're at, characters change. It's not a sleek little amphitheb, it's an expeditionary base. What's that mean? We're shore doing things. We have a bell tolling ceremony on Thursday as we go into the Memorial Day weekend. Since 9/11, there have been 85 Jeb Little Creek sailors and one Fort Story soldier killed in the line of duty since 9/11. And we'll have a bell tolling ceremony, ringing the bell at one time and calling their name out so they're never forgotten. We'll do that Thursday at 10:00. So y'all are welcome to attend that, by the way. Let me know if you want to come. Come is yard, no special, it's in the chapel. It's a moving event, because the picture's on the screen, taking a look at those young faces that were killed in action, and these are people that, you know, very comfortable to us. It's amazing. But the point I'm getting at is the character of the base has changed. It's a much different environment than it used to be. Strong reading game, I did that pretty hard. Not much else up there, I haven't covered, so I'm not going to dwell on this slide. Next slide, please. That's it.
Any questions for the captain?
I just have one.
Yes, John.
Sorry, I missed the beginning, but could you mention your EPA, big ceremony you had last week?
I had a great ceremony last week, 21 years, I think, to clean up the Superfund site. Huge milestone, EPA came down, we had a big ceremony for that, which is huge, the amount of money that was invested in the environmental cleanup. Scott, the amount of money we put out was $40 million environmental cleanup over 21 years, and they've declared it, we've reached, you know, we're clean. So that was a huge milestone. Thanks for bringing that up.
All right, I missed it.
No, thanks for bringing it up. We had a great ceremony, sorry you didn't miss it. Anybody else?
Anybody else? Well, thank you for, yes, Ben.
Well, I used to drive by all the time on Shore Drive, and when I was a kid, there used to be like a lot more ships over there. Is that just me, that there used to be a lot more ships over there?
The L S Ts, the landing ship tanks, all were decommissioned in the mid-'90s. And those were the predominant ships you had at Little Creek for a long time. The L S Ts from World War II up through the mid-'90s, and those all went away. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, it's been many years ago, but I got married there, and your staff at the front gate and the chapel, they were just so easy to work with and so helpful and really made our day special, which I know that they wanted to do that, but it was, I just wanted to say they did a great job and...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm really happy to say that that was the scene of my life.
There you go. Great, glad we could share it with you. And that's something that Lou hit real hard, that, you know, we have some great resources that we want to share. We're proud of our resources, and because we're part of the community, we want to make sure the community can have it, too.
John, Er.
Well, I just wanted to comment on the fact that, I mean, we're seeing a reoccurring theme between both the CO's comments about the incredible coordination on both sides, and I think it's a source of great pride, I know for myself and the balance of the council we've been able to do that. And I think back to when we set up the MEDEC, Mr. Vice Mayor, we went in and they were, y'all were having some traffic issues at the gate, and Lou said, we'll take care of it, and I think within a few months it was done.
We had a new traffic light and...
We've gone beyond that. I mean, Bob's out there extending our turn lanes, so we have holding pins for traffic so it's not backing up Shore Drive. I'm a little different than Lou because I have no standoff. I sit right on Shore Drive, and if I have a backup at my gates, it affects your citizens. And I'm hypersensitive to that.
I was at a function one day and I heard this voice, and it was Bill Crowe, and he was yelling, "You made a hero out of me."
Well, I think it's important to note, too, that I know former COs had all the same electrical issues that you faced and happily taken care of, but there was actually a discussion at the MEDEC meeting several years ago with Bill there, and who brought it up, and our mayor was there and made the phone calls and, you know, got the funding that was long overdue. And so those are the types of, I mean, it's just really kind of nice to have this relationship.
Great partnership here, and I'll tell you the other thing, we're going to do a ribbon cutting here very soon, because we need to commemorate this, because this is a testimony because we need to commemorate this because this is a testament, testimony to the partnership with the city because I think this is huge. So be on the lookout and we'll put something out. It'll be something, you know, cut a ribbon and drink some Kool-Aid or something.
Right, congratulations.
Bob?
Yeah, I just want to say, sir, that I too got married on your base under the cross of first landing park. And it was an excitement having a, my, you know, limo check for bombs on the way in.
There you go.
But it was a great event. And I just wanted to say that people have got to realize what a historical, you know, place that you have.
Sure.
And, you know, just a part of our nation's history in terms of what's going on. And I tell you what, it was a, you know, just being on that place, you just walk around and you sense history and thank God for what you continue to do.
1607, April 26th. And Jim got married where?
I got married at Little Creek Chapel too, so...
I knew that.
Glad to be live now.
All right. Anybody else want to get married? We will cater your affair.
I was the best.
We did a best of Oceana. I hope they notice you over there.
Well, thank you, Captain, and we appreciate your being here and giving us a rundown. We're really proud of the relationship we have with your base, you and your base too. And from the comments that both you and Lou have made here, it's apparent that you're going to be around a long time because there's a lot of new investment going on out there.
We thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Three out of 11, that's pretty hypersensitive.
That's how we, that's how we did it. They had to move it. If you didn't hear the court story...
I used to go to the dime movies. The little dime, they give the term style and go in.
Okay.
They used to be a dime...
Our next speaker is Rear Admiral Craig Quigley, who is here on behalf of the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, and we welcome you, Admiral.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I want to talk a broader view. You've heard from Captain Shager and Hewlett about the very specific details of their two respective installations. I'm going to take a look at the broader federal installations throughout Hampton Roads. And that takes us up from James City County to Virginia Beach and out to Franklin and pretty much everything in between. And my comments are going to be forward-looking. So it's not so much a current snapshot as is, what do I think is going to happen in the next five to 10 years to the federal installations throughout the region? So that's the predicate of my comments. And thank you, Bob, for flipping slides. This is a GIS map of all of the various federal installations in the region. The green is the, is, well, let me go up the other order. The bluish-purple are Defense Department facilities, and the green is everything else, all other federal agencies of the federal government. Next slide. This is the one I'm particularly fond of because this is stylized perhaps, but accurate. This represents all federal installations in Hampton Roads. And again, it's color-coded. The purple is the Defense Department, the green is the Department of the Interior and so on. But it is arguably the most dense collection of federal facilities anywhere in the nation. And that is why Hurumpha exists. Next slide. Hurumpha was formed in the spring of 2006 by the Mayors and Chairs Caucus. It wasn't a big fat surprise, I don't think, that Fort Monroe was on the list to be closed in 2005. It had been rumored for years. But Oceana was a big surprise. And so we were affected very strongly by that. The region went to general quarters, promises were made, and I can only echo what Captain Shager said. The whole Commonwealth, Virginia Beach, Navy, Oceana partnership that has rolled back encroachment at Oceana is looked at as the national model of how to do it right. So if you're an Air Force base or another naval air station and you have an encroachment issue, you would be well advised to just copy what happened here. And that is really the national model of how to do it right. So the organization was formed to keep watch on what's going on with all the federal facilities around the area. And despite the long title, the mission is really simple. Attract, retain, and grow federal facilities to Hampton Roads. Because collectively, they contribute somewhere between 40 and 43% of the gross regional product, somewhere around $20 billion of impact on our economic health. So it's a big deal. These are some of the things I'll touch on during the course of the comments. Next slide, please, Bob. Let's start with the biggest first. The Navy is three-quarters of all the regional spending. It's a pervasive presence. Not only the installation, these two gentlemen addressed as well, that the Norfolk Naval Station is the world's largest naval base, Yorktown Naval Weapons Station up on the peninsula, the hospital, the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, there's a lot of Navy in Hampton Roads. Hence, three-quarters of all that federal spending is dependent on the Navy's presence. Aircraft carriers, you read, there are 10 at the moment. By law, there are to be 11. The Navy was granted specific permission a few years ago to take a temporary dip to 10 while the Gerald R. Ford is brought online and the Enterprise was decommissioned. We have five of them here. And the six, normal posture will be six in the Pacific, five here. Four of those will be operational, one will always be in some phase of a midlife refueling overhaul over in Newport News Shipbuilding. Oceana Fintris, Captain Shager's comments on that. I will only make Craig's prediction that I believe that when the Navy does complete the environmental impact statement, it will choose Oceana as the East Coast installation for the F-35. And another prediction, that in the decades after that, when the F-35 is to be replaced, there won't be a pilot in it. Special Ops, I won't say anymore on that, nor Riverine. Ships, over time, with the shift to the Asia-Pacific, historically, the Navy has been 50-50 Atlantic-Pacific ships, submarines, aircraft, all of it. That is shifting slowly, 60-40, or 60-40, 60% the Pacific, 40% here. The newer stuff is going to the Pacific first. Ships, the F-35, as Captain Shager mentioned. Over time, I believe we'll have a smaller number of ships. They will be older. That's a mixed bag. If you're in the ship repair industry, older ships need more maintenance. So that's not entirely a bad thing, depending on where you sit on that. BRAC, of all the services, the Navy has been the least interested in a BRAC ground. They said, we're going to go through the process if it's approved by the Congress because it's a healthy thing to do. But generally, we're pretty good as far as the installations that we have closed in previous BRAC ground. And that's true of the Marine Corps as well, although we don't have a significant Marine Corps presence here. Long-term, as I said, less and older hardware and fewer people. Next slide. Air Force is the next. On the other side of the coin, no service has been more vocal about wanting a BRAC than the Air Force. But it's not installations like Langley Air Force Base that they're interested in. Across the nation, there are dozens of Air Force, Air National Guard installations that have six C-130s here, six F-16s there, around which I have to build an entire installation to take care of them, and it's bleeding them dry. So that's why the Air Force has been so vocal. They have many, many hundreds of fewer aircraft than the last round of BRAC. But there has been bajillions of dollars of investment in Langley to accommodate the classified F-22, as well as an intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance capacity that largely goes unseen, but it's very true. The UAVs, the drones that gather intelligence information from all over the world is, they're not flown from Langley, but the information is digested at Langley and then disseminated out to warfighters to actually put it to use. So it's a big deal. There has been a drawdown in the Air Combat Command staff. That is very real. We made a play with the help of our congressional delegation to get a new Air Force Installation Management Support Center. We made the final four, but we didn't make the final one. That moved down to San Antonio, Texas. Encroachment, the city of Hampton is copying you. And they are approaching encroachment exactly the same way, by approaching willing sellers in their zones at the, at the both ends of, or at one end of the runway, to purchase them, take them out of commission, rezoning, following the Virginia Beach model. And it, and the goal is, don't give the Air Force any reason to close Langley in a future round. We're also making a major effort to attract an Air Force Reserve cyber unit to be stationed at Langley. Small numbers of people, 72, but I think we got a good shot at that. Next, please. Army, interestingly, there are no Army installations in Hampton Roads anymore. Both of them have been turned into joint bases. Captain Hewlett runs one, and on the peninsula, the Air Force Colonel that runs Langley is Joint Base Langley Eustis, and the Air Force is the senior service for that one.
And we're both hokies, by the way.
There you go. The Army has been close behind the Air Force in its enthusiasm for a BRAC ground as they go down from a wartime high of 570,000 soldiers, down to 490, going to 450. It should be apparent that they need less installations somewhere. But that's not Hampton Roads. We don't have brigade combat teams like Fort Hood or Fort Campbell or other such installations around the country. We've got, the Army's Training and Doctrine Command moved 17 miles up I-64 from Fort Monroe to Fort Eustis after the 2005 BRAC ground. Lots of new housing, lots of new rotor-wing training for maintainers there. We have very good opportunity, Craig's opinion, to attract more, to take it to Eustis if in a future BRAC ground. We will hear next month, the Army did an analysis of end strength at every one of the places around the country where it has soldiers. And we're going to hear next month what that impact will be at Fort Eustis up in Newport News. Next, please. NASA Langley, NASA's oldest research center, started up in 1918. Work in, half of their works is in aeronautics, but they play a significant role in earth sciences and space exploration as well. This, you might think is somewhere you might really take a whack at their budget, but it's been surprisingly strong. The budget working its way through the 114th Congress right now is very strong and specifically very good news for NASA Langley. The largest single construction effort for all of NASA is about $93.7 million. It is a measurement systems laboratory. It is central to the long-term viability of NASA Langley. It will be used by all of NASA and it's going to be right there. It is in that budget. We're watching that carefully as it moves through the Congress. Advanced composites, Boeing won its own way on the 787 and has now vowed, I'm never going to do that again. So advanced composites are going to be a team sport from now on. And NASA Langley is playing a central role in that. Not only aviation industry, but also the automotive industry as well. They also have a significant play in unmanned systems capability for the nation as well. Next, Coast Guard. By Navy standards, the Coast Guard presence in Hampton Roads is quite small. By Coast Guard standards, it's big. This is one of the biggest pieces of Coast Guard there is in the entire organization. They struggled for several years on modernizing their cutters and their aviation assets. They've now seemed to turn the corner on that. Ships are coming in on time and on budget. The aircraft are almost all in hand. They're turning to the next two classes of slightly smaller cutters. We will see some of those in Hampton Roads, by the way. And Captain Hewlett mentioned the two cutters coming here from New Jersey. DHS is not a real popular organization right now with the Congress. And of course, the Coast Guard is in DHS. However, the good news is, they seem to recognize that the Coast Guard's sort of a different animal. And their funding is pretty stable. Next. What else? Fort Monroe is now a national monument, or about half of it, I should say. The fort itself, the moat, quarters one where President Lincoln personally directed the attack on Norfolk during the Civil War, that is all as part of the national monument. Roughly, the other half is now available for redevelopment. The goal is to make it economically self-sustaining so that it is not a burden, but a contributor can take care of itself for its financial needs going forward. They've still got some ways to go, but they're getting there. They are slowly attracting businesses and other entities to put a foot down in Fort Monroe. Ship repair and modernization, 40-some thousand people in Hampton Roads work in that industry, plus another 20 or so thousand at Newport News in shipbuilding, Virginia's largest single employer. So we have a major presence in ship repair and shipbuilding in Hampton Roads. Unmanned systems, that we are one, we, Virginia, are one of six unmanned systems test sites around the country to safely integrate unmanned aerial systems into the national airspace system. We're trying to expand that into things that crawl and float and submerge as well. And there's no reason we can't do that in Hampton Roads. There is a connection to a future BRAC ground. Again, Craig's opinion, it's not going to be in 2017, but there will be one. I can't really predict when, but it won't be in 2017. Sea level rise is an issue we need to wrap our arms around. If a military installation is deemed to be vulnerable to sea level rise and is no longer viable, then the military will stop investing in modernizing that facility and it'll be marked for extinction. So we need, that will be an issue in some future round of BRAC, and we got to watch out for that. Next, sequester. We ever heard of this word before a couple of years ago. It's a really interesting thing. On the one hand, you have the budget hawks that say, we need to limit federal spending. On the defense hawks, on the other hand, say, we need to boost funding in the Defense Department. We've gone too far in reducing their overall budget because as I look out at the world, doesn't look any more stable to me. So you have that. Sequester, if it remains in place, is sort of politically painless in the sense that it's a mechanical process. All programs are treated the same, whether they're important or not important, performing well or performing poorly, they all get whacked a certain amount. Started this year saying, we need to replace sequester with something else. I'm not at all sure that's going to happen now. If it does, it will not occur until late in the fall, September, October timeframe. But the Congress has come up with a mechanism by putting tens of billions of additional dollars in the Overseas Contingency Operation Fund, OCO fund. I don't know that it'll stay, but on the Senate and the House Armed Services Committees, their versions of the bill going forward have it in there. And the President has vowed to veto it. So this will be very interesting to see how this plays out in the months to come. By the time you get into late this year, certainly by the time it's January of 2016, it's going to be all presidential election all the time. And I think that the Congress next year, the 115th Congress, will want to get done with its spending bills as quick as humanly possible. So if there's some compromises and deals to be made, I think we'll see them in the early part of calendar year 2016. If there are reductions in some of these things, the first priority is going to be to support the men and women that are operating forward. And the shore infrastructure, the real property of maintenance, and an inability to plan for what next year might bring are all issues that these gentlemen and their peers are going to have to deal with for the foreseeable future. Next slide, please. So what does Hampton Roads have that nobody can change? We're 200 miles from our nation's capital. We got a temperate climate, a moderate cost of living, arguably one of the world's finest deep-water ice-free ports, a patriotic and educated workforce. Nobody can take any of that away from us. So play to those strengths and go after the areas of growth that you see listed on this chart. If there is a BRAC, I believe there will be, I can't predict when, want to play both offense and defense. Protect what we have and go after units that are currently stationed on installations elsewhere in the country that would be closed. And what can we bring to Hampton Roads? The busier port, Captain Hewlett made a comment on that. We will be the first East Coast port that is capable of accommodating the post-Panama ships as they come through the wider Panama Canal in the next couple of years. That's good for the trade moving through the port. It adds to the port's security issues because we've never seen ships this big come into Hampton Roads, certainly not commercial vessels. Wind energy and oil and gas drilling, there's good news there. City of Virginia Beach is all over both of those. But if they are to happen off the coast, it is important to have DOD's voice be heard, have them be at the table for those discussions, and they are. So that's a good thing. Next one? So here's my bottom line. The federal sector will contract, but it will still play a major role in our economic health. Final slide. Questions?
Any questions for Admiral Quigley?
Fantastic.
That's a whirlwind, I'm sorry, but there's just a lot of stuff. Very good, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Overall view of what, we appreciate it. All right. Our next speaker is from the Wounded Warrior Program. John?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I had asked Paula Moran, who's the president and CEO of USO for Hampton Roads in central Virginia, to come in and talk to us about Warrior Week. We had a presentation last year about Warrior Week, and Paula and her team had worked very hard. And I think we hosted in Virginia Beach well over 200 wounded warriors and their families and did a whole variety of really neat things. And it was so successful that they've come back this year. And in fact, I had worked with Mike Geeson's office. We wanted to try and host a reception at the aquarium for the warriors and their families on one of the nights during this week. And their itinerary was already so full that they weren't able to accommodate coming, which I think is really a wonderful thing to have a community that has stepped up to honor these brave men and women who are coming. And I thought it would be good of us to have a presentation by Paula about what that's going to entail in advance of that happening at the end of the month. So I appreciate your indulgence. And Paula, thanks for coming.
Thanks, thanks. I love being here talking about this. USO is my favorite subject. The mission of the USO is to lift the spirits of America's troops and their families. And those of you who have worn the cloth of our nation know that very, very well. I'm absolutely sure all of you took advantage of it and continue to take advantage of it. We are the largest USO affiliate in the world here in Hampton Roads. We have 11 centers from central Virginia all the way down to Little Creek where we have a wonderful center that serves lunch. And Captain loves that. We serve the largest military population in the world, as you have heard from these gentlemen that have spoken to you today. And it is only fitting that we started, I don't, I think, I don't know, it was started on a napkin, I believe, the Patriotic Festival 10 years ago. You guys were sitting around, so wouldn't this be a great idea? And it was a wonderful idea. But last year, we decided, you know what, we need to take it, we need to up the ante a little bit. Because there are a lot of people out there that are serving our country that I really don't think, you look at it this way, 100% of Americans enjoy freedom, but only 1% of us are willing to sign on that dotted line and put our lives on the... You guys were sitting around, so wouldn't this be a great idea? And it was a wonderful idea. But last year, we decided, you know what? We need to take it, we need to up the ante a little bit. Because there are a lot of people out there that are serving our country that I really don't think, you look at it this way, 100% of Americans enjoy freedom, but only 1% of us are willing to sign on that dotted line and put our lives on the line for it. And so what can we do to make it better? And Virginia Beach is the perfect site for that. And so we started with our Warrior Week last year. It was hugely successful. And we're making it a little better this year, too. This year, we are bringing together even more physical, therapeutic, and recreational activities for our wounded, ill, and injured service members. In addition, we are bringing the families of the fallen through Navy Gold Star families who will be participating this year. We're very excited about that. Each wounded service member and his or her family will have the opportunity to participate in such things as water skiing, adaptive water skiing, kayaking, surfing, fishing, horseback riding, and racquetball. And the city of Virginia Beach and the USO of Hampton Roads and central Virginia have designed this event to bring all levels of skill and interest together in one place. And this will again create lasting memories for the families to enjoy in the future. Now, if you don't mind, we have a short video that will help really put it all together.
Warrior Week was created, originated about late last summer when the city of Virginia Beach approached me and asked if the USO could expand the programs and services that we're doing for the wounded, ill, and injured here in Virginia Beach. Did the research on the metrics and found out that outdoor recreational activities was one of the most favorite things that our wounded, ill, and injured like to do. People we brought together bring bicycling, sailing, surfing, water skiing, deep-sea fishing, kayaking, horseback riding, and parachuting. We wanted outdoor recreational activities that could include the families. Patriotic Festival's been in existence for 10 years. It started off as a big concert and on the beach and bringing lots of military involvement. So this year, we tied it in there. So after a full day of outdoor rec activities and having fun in the sun with your family, you can come and listen to some first-class entertainment and eat some incredible food. We had over 550 participants, and I can tell you, rest assured, the vast majority had an absolute blast this week.
It's Ride to Recovery. They start on Memorial Day. They have various stops. And on Friday, Friday after Memorial Day, they'll end up at GEICO where they'll be served food because you know they're going to be starving. And then they'll be able to participate in all the activities. I want to draw your attention to the flyers that I've placed on the table. Now, the one with a small, one's an invitation, and that is to our really, really cool, really fun reception. It's called a beach party reception, and it's going to be on Ninth Street at Spring Hill Suites. And you're all invited. I do need you to tell me, though, because security, as you know, is going to get, it's just tight for us, too. I mean, there have been threats against the USO. ISIS apparently doesn't like us either. So we want to be sure that everybody's as safe as humanly possible. So you've got the information on there about how you RSVP, bring a spouse, just come out and enjoy a really, really fun time. What's going to be great about this year, though, and is new for us, is at 5:30 PM, the Marine Corps Silent Drill Team, I don't know if you all have ever seen them, I've seen them in DC, and they are awesome. They're coming to perform for us. And then they will lead the Walk of Gratitude from Ninth Street down to the concert site, where people will be able to line the boardwalk and cheer and celebrate the service that is so very important to all of us. Now, if you can't come to that, there are two other opportunities through the weekend for fun. You can come on Saturday night or Sunday night, Sunday, well, I guess it's Sunday afternoon. And Alabama's going to be here. I'm an old girl, so Alabama's going to be really cool for me. And Lynyrd Skynyrd, woo-hoo, that's really cool. That's Saturday. But, and these young kids, Lee Bryson, Chase Rice, I don't know who they are, apparently they're country singers, but they're really very well-loved, and it's going to be an exciting concert. So we'd love to have all of you come out. Please RSVP if you're able to come, and we're just going to have a wonderful time together. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to come talk about this. I am really grateful to the city of Virginia Beach. It's a wonderful, wonderful community, and I'm very happy to be a part of it. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? It's pretty clear on there, I think.
Has Edley got one?
I do. Is there an overall coordination of wounded warrior?
Oh, happy you asked that. No, there is not. And we get confused with others that have the word wounded in that. We call our program Warrior and Family Care, and we refer to them as the wounded, ill, and injured. Now, the thing about the USO is we take care of service members from the day they sign up at the MEPS Center, and as they transition out, we take care of all of our needs. If a service member makes the ultimate sacrifice, the USO is there to support their families and shepherd them through the families of the fallen process. We do everything. And sometimes, you know, our logo's not as sexy, and it doesn't get as much attention, but at the end of the day, we take care of everybody all the time throughout your entire service. And these gentlemen, I think, here will echo that statement. So there isn't a coordinating group. And it's very hard, especially, and we're a nonprofit, we rely exclusively on donations from corporations and local businesses and local people. And we get confused all the time with these other organizations. It's kind of frustrating for us. But yeah, but we do have a wonderful Warrior and Family Care program, and you can find out more about that on our website. Thanks, everybody.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate your presentations and your interest in the community, and we welcome you anytime you want to come.
Thanks very much. See you next Tuesday, Blue.
Kevin, is something sent tonight?
Nope, I'm afraid not.
My card, in case anybody needs it.
Yeah, I got one. Thank you very much. All right. City Council comments. Mr. Dyer.
Okay, thank you. Members of the City Council, I would like to propose perhaps a workshop to talk about a subject that I think would benefit not only us but the public at large, and just to help that. And I guess we all know on the national stage, there's a lot of, you know, civil unrest and, you know, some bad feelings and words going around. And we just really came off challenging, you know, budget process, life rail and everything, where, you know, we literally had hundreds of people, you know, come in front of us. And I'll tell you what, I think it's a remarkable system that we have when people are allowed to come in front of us and voice their concerns and everything. But in speaking, you know, to members of this body and also members of the public, you know, I think, you know, we had, you know, some problems where, you know, unfortunately, a couple folks may have crossed the line, you know, with the personal attacks and everything. And, you know, I think that, you know, this is an initiative that we've got to take seriously because I'm afraid that, you know, as we're viewed, you know, especially by children and, you know, other members, and even people that are in the gallery. And, you know, I think we've got to be sensitive that some folks are just very frustrated with what's going on. But, you know, but that being said, you know, I think that we have to take, you know, a bold initiative to really promote, you know, civility and mutual respect between us and, you know, our public, especially, you know, more and more, we're going to be facing some fiscal challenges in the future and everything. And, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, if there's a way to build some better bridges and, you know, promote some understanding, that can make this process a little bit, you know, better for all of us. Last Sunday, I had the pleasure of standing in for the mayor. There were a group of pastors from various religious groups working, you know, making a concerted effort to work with the police, you know, to avoid and build those bridges. And I think our police department has done some remarkable things. But the point is, though, I think, you know, that even within our own gallery, you know, we'll sit there and, you know, and I think there are some already rules of conduct that we have in place. And Mark, can you kind of give a, you know, a little background on, you know, what was going on, you know, about the statutes that we have in place right now?
You have a code section, section 2-343, I'm sorry, of the Virginia Beach City Code, which deals with decorum and order in the chamber during meetings. It, of course, provides that the presiding officer shall preserve decorum and decide questions of public order subject to appeal to the entire council. It indicates that any person addressing the council should confine themselves to comments germane to the action under debate, should avoid reference to personalities, and should refrain from vulgarity or other breach of respect. Any failure to conform makes them subject to being declared out of order by the presiding officer. And it also, the code section also makes the chief of police or his designee the sergeant at arms at the council meeting. So you do have an existing ordinance on point.
But, you know, I think the point that we do not want to ever not give somebody the bail bolt to come up and speak, or actually speak in, you know, terms of dissent of something we may do, you know, I think that's part of the process. But I think, you know, just in terms of overall moving forward, especially, you know, with some of the contentious issues that we may, you know, be facing, you know, I think it's the, you know, take some initiative, I would like, not to decide anything here, but I have a workshop where we can all, you know, contribute and figure out ways that we can build, you know, stronger bonds with the community. You know, for instance, you know, in discussing with the city attorney, you know, the fact that maybe we can put on the card when they sign up a copy of this ordinance, you know, that they would subscribe that they understand, you know, a simple thing. You know, that perhaps having a sergeant at arms or just, you know, somebody of presence there that would enforce that. But also, you know, I know it's rough for the presiding officer sometimes, you know, the reluctance is not to gavel, to let people speak. But I just think that it would be just in the interest of public decorum and good government if we were able to maybe find some, you know, procedures that, you know, would just make things a little bit easier, you know, in terms of building this bridge. You know, one of the other things that, you know, I might suggest is that, you know, especially things we can look at, or maybe some of the budget process, if we have alternative budgets or the budget presented to us maybe a week or two before, you know, reconciliation and actually have a reconciliation thing, I don't know. These are just some of the things I think we might be able to talk about as a group and as a body, you know, just to promote goodwill between us, you know, and still give people the opportunity, you know, to come forward, you know. I can't imagine how many hundreds of people we heard over the last month or so. But, and I tell you, we've got some very good feedback both ways on it. So with the permission of the council, I'd at least like to have a, you know, discussion, you know, maybe in a workshop where we all, as a collective body, you know, can, you know, come up with some ways that would actually come out there and really build these bridges. I think Virginia Beach has already a step on a number of cities, you know, with our Human Rights Commission and, you know, the way that we do things, you know, with the reputation of our police, with the engagement and everything. This is really, you know, a larger picture, and I think that we have the ability to do something pretty good. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more with Bobby. We do have an ordinance in place, and I think that we all care so much about what the public says. I mean, that's why we have so many public hearings, and we have open mic night, and we are very accessible to the public. And, but sometimes, some of these speakers, especially this time, they went a little bit far. And it seems like the further some of them went, then the further some more of them went. And it's sort of, one person cannot do the other. And I don't actually blame any of them. I really blame ourselves that we've got something in place that we really haven't enforced it. And I think part of the problem is that, you know, we want to respect what they say. And I've been doing this stuff for a while, and I do respect, you know, differences of opinions. And I think a lot of it's important. And a lot of their opinions, even if I don't agree with my vote, a lot of what they've said, I agree with them in my thoughts. But I think what we need, even though we have an ordinance, we need a process so that we have a better way of dealing with this if it should come up again. And I think what Bobby has said is really germane to right now.
Jim?
Well, I couldn't agree more with Bobby and Rosemary on this. I think dissent is certainly part of the political process. But there was a number of inappropriate activity that took place. And I counted three different times where we were, where there were Nazi references about this board. You know, people were literally screaming at times, they were directing comments, personal comments at various members of council. And, you know, they weren't on point. They weren't talking about the budget, but rather they were attributing, you know, malicious intent to different members of council. And something really that I heard a heck of a lot about from people who watch this on TV. And, you know, as bad as it is for us sitting there, it's much worse when people see it on TV because they don't understand why we're allowing it to continue. And as Bob says, you know, kids are watching this stuff and things like that. And when you have people do some of these things, it's really bad. And speaking with some of the legislators in Richmond, you know, the comments that they've said is this stuff wouldn't last two seconds in Richmond. I mean, they gavel them down, and that's it. And I understand it's difficult for the presiding officer a lot of times to do that, particularly if they're directing comments, personal attacks at the presiding officer. But we do need to do something. We have to preserve the decorum.
Shannon?
I was going to say, basically what Jim just said at the end here, our statute says the presiding officer has the control to do, that when 90% of the comments are directed at the presiding officer, it kind of puts him or her in a predicament that it's kind of hard to fall back to this. You're not going to do that. I mean, I don't know if we have some take part for that.
I guess, if I may just, John, on Shannon's comment there, I guess, Mark, is there any provision where any other council member could?
A council member can always raise a point of order for consideration by the chairman.
Yeah. Okay. John?
I agree. In fact, the one lady who wasn't in supportive light, remember when she came up, the older lady, and she said, I feel sorry for you all. She said this, then she said her piece. And though she wasn't agreeing with the majority was, she recognized like, whoa. But I think we also need to be careful. The school board, once you may recall about a decade ago, lost a case at the State Supreme Court as they tried to admonish people and actually tried to prosecute them, if I remember correctly, for, because they had made personal comments, and the Supreme Court ruled, so we will need to believe.
It was actually the federal district court.
But I don't know if they got ruled on. So we need to make sure that when we look at our processes, we need to be very mindful of that. I'd like to, if we could recover that.
I have the opinion of my desk.
Opinion, I'd like to see that because I think we need to adopt our procedures within the guidelines of that. But I do think a number of people went way, way over the line, and it was way too personal. But I just want to make sure that we are mindful of that decision and make sure we look at that as our guidelines for our procedures so we don't find ourselves embarrassing ourselves as we try to comply with our ordinance.
John?
Yeah, I mean, probably the appropriate time to do is to talk about this at the retreat. I guess we're going to have it at the end of August. But, you know, for me, my bigger concern was less about comments that were made about any individuals at this table, including myself, but really the comments that were made in the audience against other audience members. And I think that that, that's really, because that really usurps the process. I mean, we're going to sit there and we're going to listen regardless of what somebody says about me or anyone else at this table. But, you know, someone who's sitting in the audience, who's coming in and wants to make a point, it's intimidating to sit out there, and particularly when you've got people screaming at you and doing those types of things. So, you know, I appreciate Bobby bringing it up, and I think it definitely warrants some further discussion. But, you know, that's really the part that I would be interested in trying to maintain the decorum because, I mean, you don't want somebody being shouted down from being able to make their own appropriately made comments. And, I mean, that's what really gave me pause.
Well, I guess the real question here, based on the comments that we've had, is there, do you have the ability? is there, do we have, do you have the ability to put together some guidelines for us?
I can certainly walk you through the, the Bach decision and what it means. It is an interesting, it is an interesting intellectual exercise to determine what comments are legitimately prescribed and what the First Amendment requires people to be allowed to say.
Right.
And the Bach decision basically stands for the proposition that you can't tell anybody, you can't tell everybody, they, they can't criticize a public official or, or a, a public figure while simultaneously allowing people to get up and praise those same public officials or, or representatives. So it is an interesting line to draw, and I can, I can send you all some information about that.
Yeah, would, if you would do that, I think everybody would appreciate that, Mark.
Certainly.
Yes.
And I, I think that the big, the big issue here is all of us knowing a process of what to do if, if and when this rises again, because otherwise, we really aren't sure how to handle it. You know, and either, we really, we need to know how to deal with it ourselves.
Okay, yes, Barbara.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree with, you know, what Johnny said, especially about, you know, comments that go from people in the audience to other people. But, and that being said, that, you know, you know, you know, yes, there might be a time at the retreat in August, but the thing is, do we have the luxury, you know, should we maybe try to have a workshop before that, to at least get the discussion rolling and, you know, get some of the mechanisms in place? Because I think an important component of this is gonna be, you know, the, you know, the public, you know, education on what we're trying to do in bringing them to the table. And I think, you know, on initiatives like we have been doing, like with Urina and everything, we're finding a definite value of bringing the, you know, the public to the table to help us, you know, with our decision process. And I, you know, I think that we could probably maybe use this as a useful tool, you know, as we go forward, you know, to have the public in a better, you know, you know, mutual, mutual respect dialogue, help us determine some of the priorities we gotta do. So, just my thought there, folks.
All right. Anybody else with comments? Yes. Barbara?
Maybe somewhat related, but not, not, not meant to be necessarily. But as far as next step, and I, I didn't bring that gigantic document again, I think that, one, one criticism I have of this environmental impact study that we've been working with is that it's so hard to handle. It does discourage reading. It's gotta be the heaviest pages to turn and then to get back, so it's very awkward to read it. But I did, and I think I'm sure most of you did. And there's a lot of information in there that I would really like to see us now, since we have determined what our locally preferred alternative is, and we've agreed to go to the next step of study, to, to take the best advantage of, of this time. I think there were a lot of, of important issues raised in that. And of course, now we can concentrate on the, the alternative that we selected and not have to, to do all the rest of it. But this is what I was going to ask for a, a workshop, to, to kind of take it to the next level of some of the things that we, we might want to be exploring during this year or so, that, that there is going to be the additional work done. A, a couple of things that, that really impressed me in some of the comments, and I guess it was the chapter on social issues, and certainly I wasn't abet to mention social in all of this last week, because then we'd be accused of social engineering, but we are, this year, redoing our comprehensive plan. And, and the point that was made several times in that analysis was that the, the issue of transit and, and what we were looking at is, is a, a very important part of our comprehensive plan. And I think it actually said in two or three different times in that chapter that if we did not do this transit quarter, then our comprehensive plan won't work. And, and I think the whole thing of our strategic growth areas and recognizing that this, this quarter is our commercial spine, I think they called it. What if, you know, when they talked about the build and the no build alternative, we really don't know what the no build alternative is as far as our comprehensive plan goes, because we have built our comprehensive plan and our strategic growth areas on transit-oriented development. So if we do not go forward, then what is our comprehensive plan? And I think maybe in, in this year of updating our comprehensive plan, you know, we kind of need to, to maybe say, okay, and I haven't heard, and I've been attending workshops of the planning commission as they've been reviewing the comprehensive plan, I haven't heard anybody say, well, we want to undo that part of it. But I, I think it's certainly time, when we're updating our comprehensive plan, that we need to, you know, really face this critical question. That's one of my thoughts. Another one of my thoughts that, 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 of one of the things, and I'm, and there are many others, but we're also, of course, doing the human resources, is that the right name for it, our homeless facility? And making the point that, I guess, the park and ride lot for the area there could possibly be incorporated with that facility, with that parking. I think there are issues like that that we, we need to be talking about during this year. And as far as I think, when we selected that particular site for this facility, we had the fact that it was on a, a major transit line as one of the reasons to place it there. And, and so, but those are just two of the things that, that come to my mind right now. But I had a number of them as I was reading through all of that material, things that we really, I think they've done this analysis, and we need to take this analysis and then look a little bit further, not only to help us with making this further decision, but if we don't, you know, do this, this transit project, then what would we do? So I, I just see that maybe there's a workshop there and a lot of work for staff and us and other community groups to be doing during this year, to put us in a better position next year, you know, to make a final decision. Just my thought.
Yes, Johnny.
Well, my, I was gonna, first thing I had on my list was, I would like an executive session at a future date for us to talk about our IT security plan. I know that qualifies under the executive session statute, but I'd like the council to be briefed on just what our IT security architecture is, and what our plan is, and how, how robust it is, and where the shortfalls are, so we can be conscious of that, I think. I think as a, as a board, that's something we should be knowledgeable about. Secondly, I'd like, if we could, if I could get an updated spreadsheet to show, based on the adopted ordinance that increases our borrowing capacity per capita, how much of that capacity that we've now approved is available each fiscal year going forward? Since obviously we want to borrow more money, then the number one thing I hear from people isn't rail, but roads. I'm gonna be looking to develop something for a referendum in 2016 to put a substantial investment in roads and give the people a chance to vote on roads. I think they'll be very receptive to that. With regards to workshop on the study, and I have read that thing many times, probably as well as anyone, I suspect, but maybe not more than somebody from that study, I think until we know what the FTA decides to choose as the preferred alternative, or alternatives, I talked, and there can be more than one, to proceed with the FEIS, I think it would be premature to have a workshop, because we need to know what they're going to carry forward into the FEIS process, because that is the decision that they make upon their adjudication of the DEIS. They're going to decide what they're gonna carry forward to do the thirty-five percent of design on. That's their decision, not ours. We made a recommendation. But the decision is the FTA's, and I think we need to know what that is before we have a workshop.
All right. Yes, Amelia?
On a different subject, last week, I went to the meeting with the police of Virginia Beach over at Economic Development, and they had close to thirty in attendance from the different universities, the different civic leagues, and they're looking at putting together a community forum showcasing how we do civic engagement with the police as well as building relationships. So that should be coming up in July, and we need to commend Chief Severus and his group for pulling together. This is the second meeting, and the next will be setting up a community conversation forum over at the Convention Center. And then the second thing, I got a chance to sit with the Acredale Civic League Association, and which is one of our older community, that recently had one of their members, was a hundred and six-year-old past. And also, they had a lovely picnic on this past weekend, which I attended, and just one of the communities that we look at who has continuity, and the people are coming right back, even the younger generation. So I thought to share that they are really working and trying to do things within the community. And I also attended our historic Kempsville Citizen Advisory Committee, and one of the things we're looking forward to is the Kempsville Princess Anne Intersection being completed by the first week of June, but that doesn't include the lighting. Of course, they have to finish Nemo before that. Also, our little eaglets, there are three of them up there, we have heard from the Farm and Life, and it's an entire process for those federal birds. You won't believe how much the fencing and keeping a certain area, and we have to watch, hopefully, when the eaglets have fledged the nest, we still have to watch for ten more days to see if they come back before we can move forward, that they are strong enough. There's an amazing process that's going through. Someone needs to write up this entire thing, because they're not only looking at that, they're looking at the Green Sea, they're looking at Stumpy Lake, they're looking at all of our special areas that have preservations at all. Thank you.
Shannon?
I wanted to say, well, Cindy's here especially, our tourism for sports-related marketing is, is really going so well. I was at the Sportsplex on Saturday and Sunday of this weekend for events. The Princess Anne Athletic Complex and Sportsplex and Phil House, they were all packed. You couldn't find parking, there were people, festivals and runs and games, and there are people everywhere. And it was really kind of cool to see. I don't know how many were local versus out of town, but it was definitely getting used, and it was good to see the Sportsplex getting that much, that much volume going on over there. It's, it's, it's good. So I just wanted to make that comment. And thank you, Cindy, for your leadership in that department and making sure Michael and everything's working so well.
A lot of good things going on with some great partners.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
John in particular. The associations at the oceanfront have been pretty strong in their position about offshore drilling. Do you think we ought to reconsider that, our position?
I-
Beg pardon?
We may. I hadn't really considered that.
You have what?
I hadn't considered it before you asked, as to whether or not we would do that or not, but that may be something we-
Yes, Rosemary.
We'll have some conversation about it a future day.
I think if we do reconsider it, it would be nice to have some briefings of both sides, because I just don't think we all have enough information to be making, you know, I mean, I would just, I would like personally more information on both sides of the issue.
On that point, I know that, you know, Congressman Regal does support it, and I have spoken with Scott quite a bit about it, and I think, you know, whoever we do it, but I'm with Rosemary, that would be worthwhile to, to not only have that education just for us, but here so the public can see it, and, because there is, there's a lot, there's a lot of dimensions to that issue, and it's not as simple as it sounds.
And maybe get representatives to represent each side, come and present those sides to us. I, I personally would really like to have that information.
Anybody else like to have that information?
Like to have that information.
Yeah, I think I would too, so. Ben, you, anybody object to that?
I think that'd be great for everybody.
We'll get it on a plan for a workshop.
Okay, good. All right. Anybody else have any comments?
The industry.
If not, we'll go over the agenda. Under ordinances and just ordinances today. Anybody having a problem with either one of the ordinances? So they're both okay, Barbara? Okay, under planning, HOFD Asheville Park, that's recommended for indefinite deferral. Okay, Barbara?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, for indefinite deferral. Under item two, Cardinal Sign, I don't have any problem with it. Jim, you're the other liaison there. Do you?
That's, that's fine, I talked to him his last day about it today.
C, item three, CNC Development Company, Lynn Haven, Jim?
Yeah, the Civic League is fine on it, they, they sent everybody a letter, so.
So we're okay with that, all right? Item four, CP Marine and Diesel Services, Inc., I had, do, had, did get a, receive a call from a lady who has a business right next door to this location, and she says she's gonna be here to speak. So she, she's concerned about it, so. Item five, trustees of First Presbyterian Church Beach District, Mr. Earn.
Do that, Mr. Rosemary.
Item six, Waves Motel Beach District, Mr. Earn. Item seven, changes of zoning in the historic Kempsville District, I don't have any problem with them, I think they're all fitting what we're trying to do there.
I'm voting no. I voted no on the original rezoning that made that possible, my vote remains in.
Is it Bayside or Kempsville?
Well, first one is in Bayside. Second?
Uh, Kempsville.
Amelia, you okay?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so we'll have it on the consent agenda, Barbara, when you make the motion, if you'll just note that John's voting no on it, please, okay? City to amend is item eight, city to amend the city zoning ordinance. Anybody have any problem with any of those items? Yes, Barbara?
I just have a question about A. In the definition for a wine tasting room, it says that it's an establishment licensed as a winery or farm winery, blah, blah, blah. How can it be a farm winery in these zoning categories? I mean, because to be a farm winery, you're supposed to have raised some part of it, and that would have to be agricultural, and it wouldn't be in these, in these zoning categories. So does our definition preclude?
No, ma'am, you can't have a farm winery except in an ag district.
Right.
And the ABC laws specifically say that a, the license is as a farm winery or a winery. So if someone were to want to have a wine tasting room in, say, a B2 district, they would have to have the winery license, and they could not have a farm winery license because they're not in an ag district. So we're okay there.
Okay, it just, I just wasn't sure how it was going to get to be a farm winery and a, a, a business in one of those zoning districts.
Right, you can, you can have a wine tasting room and a farm winery, but only-
But then we don't, ag, ag district is not one of these, that it's allowed, oh, well, it's not a principal use, I guess it's a conditional use in the other.
Well, the other thing is that a farm winery, you can have a, a wine tasting room.
Right, but it wouldn't be a principal use. Okay, all right.
Okay, so everybody okay then? Yes, Johnny?
I'm voting no on C and D, out of the principle that I said before when this came up, that we should be looking at this just for this place, that we should be adopting it as a comprehensive look. And then, when I went and looked at it and said, well, in the future, we might look at SGA's, but I think it shouldn't just be SGA's, we should have, when I said comprehensive, that it should be across all zoning categories. We haven't done that, that's what I asked, and I'm voting no, just because people didn't listen very well.
That's on C and D?
Correct.
I have one more question, on the, the issue of the non-conformities. I think the way this is worded, a non-conformity that is being replaced on- I think the way this is worded, a non-conformity that is being replaced on the existing footprint would, would not have to go through this process. It's only if it's enlarged or changed in some fashion.
But, well, it could be enlarged upwards, so one-story, non-conforming structure, that remains the same footprint, but has another story built on, will be enlarged, and it would have to go through the same process.
But something that's, for example, a, a building burns down, something that's replaced in exactly the same-
That, that's applied right under the state code, they would not have to go through-
They would not have to go through all this process. This is only if they're going to be enlarged, or the location are changed.
Or moved, or something like that.
Right, okay. I just didn't want us to be causing problems for somebody that really just replaced as it was previously. Okay.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on any of them? Any other further comments before we go into executive session? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to recess and to close session pursuant to the exemption from opening, open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussion, consideration of, or interviews prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call, call a roll, please.
Councilmember Davenport?
Aye.
Councilmember Dyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Earn?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis? Wilson, I apologize.
Okay.
And Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.